I think most of you know, our former city councilman and longtime state representative, Jody Hayden, passed away yesterday. Unfortunately, his wife of 55 years has on November 19th passed away the day before. So, let's have a moment of silence and think of Jody and the Hayden and Greenwell family and how they deal with this loss this week. Okay, thank you. First item on our agenda, we had the pleasure of swearing in a new police officer who was with us. And we'll do the swearing in for Daniel Osborne. And then Chief, you want to introduce him formally to the council? And then I'll do the oath when we get finished.
Absolutely, my pleasure. I'd like to introduce Officer Daniel Osborne. He comes to us from Minnesota. He had nine years of law enforcement experience. So, he was with the Covington Police Department and Austin Police Department in Minnesota. He comes with a lot of certifications and just a vast array of experience. So, we're so excited for him to be here. Just to name a few, he's CIT, which is Crisis Intervention Training, which our officers are also, so that's good to have that. He's Courtenham Certified. He was a field training officer. He was actually a sergeant up in Minnesota. He founded their department's peer support program and also established a chaplain program at his agency. He was also a member of Kentucky Army National Guard, where he rose to the rank of sergeant there also. So, he's definitely a leader everywhere he goes. So, we're really excited for him to be here. And he's from Barstown, so he's back home. And so, we thank them for being here and thank his wife. I'll let him introduce his family here. She's from Minnesota, but she has moved here to Barstown. And it is a wonderful community and we're so happy for you to be a part of that. Thanks.
Thank you, everyone. This is my wife Kat, my mom Tracy, and my dad Jeff.
We're welcome. Thanks all for being here. Osborne, I was trying to get the background of which part of the Osborne family you all were from. So, I hope you've got Washington, any else in county. And you guys are welcome tonight. We're so happy to have Daniel join our department. So, Daniel, if you'll raise your right hand as I'll give you the oath of office. I, Daniel Osborne, do solemnly swear and affirm that I will support the Constitution of the United States of America and the Constitution of this Commonwealth and be thankful and true that the Commonwealth will protect me so long as I continue a citizen thereof and that I will faithfully execute to the best of my ability the position of police officer according to law. I do firmly solemnly swear or affirm that since the adoption of the present Constitution, I, being a citizen of this state, had not fought a duel with deadly weapons within this state nor out of it, nor have accepted the challenge to fight a duel with deadly weapons, nor have acted as a second in carrying the challenge, nor aided or assisted any person thus offended. So help me God. I firmly solemnly swear that I will endeavor to the best of my ability to protect and prosecute all gamblers and others violating the laws against game. Welcome. Congratulations. Chief always gives me the applications and the background checks and everything. And this one, when I saw this one, I said, "We gotta get him back here." I said, "We need officers with this kind of background and family, with local ties and everything." So, I know you're gonna do us a good job and we're glad to have you on board. And good luck going forward. And thank you all for, hopefully, I'm sure you all might have encouraged me to make this decision. I'd say, if I was his father and mother, I would heavily have done that. And Kat, we're glad to have you too.
Thank you.
Every man needs a good woman.
I try.
All right, thank you.
Katie, do you have to say anything?
I appreciate everybody's time tonight and I'm happy to be home. And if there's anything I can do to help anybody, don't hesitate to reach out. Do what I can for you. Thank you. Appreciate it. Congratulations.
Give me a second to get this up. We didn't get all our information on our historical review board, really, to have it on your iPad tonight. So, we're gonna table those for our December meeting. We don't have too many. We had, what, four, I think?
Three.
Three. So, I think we've tabled them. And not really that time says that one still requires a resumé and the bigger one requires a lot more stuff before you even get started anyhow. We'll table those. We have the minutes from the November 11th meeting. There's no additions or corrections. We'll prove that by unanimous consent. And so, I hope Audrey's rested up and got plenty of help here for salivating so she can do all this reading. I don't remember, we went through the first reading, last meeting, so we gotta go through it on the second reading. So, I guess we need to let you read, start out with the new amendment. N2025-13, this is the summary of electricity ordinance.
Yes. And then when I discussed with Erin, like some of the ones that have longer charts, in the past I've just said as set forth on the chart, but we discussed them in detail also. So, I will probably do that on some of the ones that have very long charts, which I think is permitted under the state statute.
Erin, you want to just give, I think, just a little background that this is a result of a rate study? You want to give a little background?
Yeah. This same slideshow from last time. Electric rates, we contracted with a third party based out of Texas. They're a consulting economic firm that specializes in rate studies and electric rates, utility rates, new industry strategy. They came back, they've been working on it, used FY24 data, looking at historical expenses, industry standards of what they're expecting expenses to look like, and then looking at our overall revenues and created the rates that Audrey will read here shortly. There were other updates within the ordinance. If you want me to go through them, I can go through these again and talk about them. But if you guys have any questions, just let me know after she's done reading.
Okay. Summary of ordinance number B2025-13, Chapter 50, Electricity. An ordinance amending and adopting as amended Chapter 50 Electricity of the City of Barstown's Code of Ordinances, whereas the City of Barstown formed a rate study to revise its rates to appropriately cover costs associated with providing service, and whereas the City of Barstown's Electric Department has determined it is necessary to modify the rates charged to electric customers based on the information learned from the rate study, now therefore be to ordain by the City Council of the City of Barstown, Kentucky that amendments be made to Chapter 50 Electricity under subsections 50.01 Definitions, 50.02 Rates for Residential Customers, 50.03 Rates for Commercial Customers, 50.04 Security Lights, 50.05 Service Fees and Deposits, 50.06 Surcharge, and 50.08 Billing When Due Penalty. 50.01 Definitions. This section shall be updated to reflect changes to how commercial customer, industrial customer, and residential customer are defined. 50.02 Rates for Residential Customers, this section shall be amended to reflect the following rates. A, E1 Residential Customers, the customer charge shall now be $15 for all kilowatt-hours. The charge shall be .0948 cents per kilowatt-hour. B, E6 Residential Customers with net billing generation, the customer charge shall now be $16. And for all kilowatt-hours delivered, the charge shall be 0.948 cents per kilowatt-hour. For all kilowatt-hours received, the new charge shall be .07618 cents per kilowatt-hour. Section 50.03 Rates for Commercial Customers, this section shall be amended to reflect the following rates and will add an additional section for E7 Commercial Customers. A, E2 Commercial Customers, for those commercial customers using electrical current without kilowatt demand metering and measured through a single meter, rates are as follows. Customer charge shall be $23. All kilowatt-hours shall be .1018 cents per kilowatt-hour. Adding a new section, paragraph B, E7 Commercial Customers, for those commercial customers with net billing generation using electrical current without kilowatt demand metering and measured through a single meter, rates are as follows. Customer charge shall be $16 for all kilowatt-hours delivered, 0.0865 cents per kilowatt-hour. For all kilowatt-hours received, 0.07618 per kilowatt-hour. Now, paragraph C, for E3 Large, now Commercial Customers, so Section 1, it will read available to commercial customers with a monthly demand in excess of 20 kilowatts using electrical current with kilowatt demand metering, the rates are as follows. The minimum, $175. The customer charge will now be $45. All kilowatts will be $11 per kilowatt. All kilowatt-hours will be 0.0643 cents per kilowatt-hour. Paragraph 3 will be added, which will read any commercial customer that installs renewable generation and applies for net billing will be established as an E7 Commercial Customer with no demand billing, no matter their previous customer class, E2 or E3. Paragraph D will now read E4 Industrial Customer, City-Owned Distribution Facilities. The minimum charge will be $1,000. Customer charge will now be $135. For all kilowatt-hours, the charge will now be $13 per kilowatt. For all kilowatt-hours, the charge will be 0.0613 per kilowatt-hour. And the power factor correction, kilowatt will be $1 per kilowatt adjusted, as is set out in the Electric Department's Rules and Regulations. Paragraph E, E5 Industrial Customers, for Customer-Owned Distribution Facilities. The minimum will be $1,000. The customer charge will now be $135. All kilowatts will be $12 per kilowatt. All kilowatt-hours will be 0.0613 cents per kilowatt-hour. The power correction factor, kilowatt, will be $1 per kilowatt adjusted. The section 50.04 Security Lights will add a chart. Security light rates and options will be set forth based on the following table, which identifies security light types and rates based on the type of light. If the city must set a goal for the light, a now $2.50 per month charge will be added. Section 50.05 Service Fees will strike and deposits are in the title. A, One Temporary Pole Service, One House Per Service. The fee will be $100 for 110 volt or 220 volts. Paragraph 2, Meter Test Charges, where the test odometer is requested during normal working hours by a customer, the customer will be charged as specified below to cover the test and transportation costs. A, A Single Phase Meter is $65. B, A Polyphase Meter will be $105. We're striking the section on return check charges here. And then subsection C regarding deposits is stricken entirely. Now, re-letter, paragraph B, Application for Net Billing and Connection Processing Fee Level 2 will be $100. Now, paragraph C, Underground Service Fees for the City of Barstown's Underground Distribution Policies and Regulations, sets forth the underground residential housing developments fees for transformer tap fees, riser fees, pulling fees. And then paragraph 2 sets forth the same fees for riser fees, pulling fees, transformer fees for commercial and industrial installations. Inserting paragraph D, Damaged Meter, the Electric Department will supply the first electric meter use for calculating energy usage to each customer. If this meter becomes damaged and is determined to be the result of a malfunctioned or overused meter socket, the customer will be charged the current retail price of the electric meter and internal radio to cover the cost of replacing the equipment. City Electrical Engineer and/or their representative will determine whether or not the electric meter was damaged from malfunction or overuse and non-international causes, i.e. wind hail, lightning, et cetera. Adding paragraph E, Outdoor Electric Panel Rental, the Electric Department will provide upon request outdoor-rated freestanding panels for the purpose of providing electric outlets for an outdoor event. A panel must be requested to the department a minimum of one week prior to any event. Panels are unveared, therefore, the following rates are established to account for electric usage and wear and tear on the equipment. For only 20 amp outlet, it's $50 per day rate. For 20, 30, and 50 amp outlets, it's $75 per day. Section 50.06 Surcharge, the base rate is the base wholesale power cost, striking the exclusive of CPO power cost, expressed as dollars per kilowatt-hour included in and used to determine the retail base rates established herein for all retail customers. The base rate as of the effective date of this chapter will now be 0.07618 cents. And then section 50.08 Billing, we're striking when due from the title. It will still read penalty and we are adding and account fees. Paragraph B will be amended to read all the texts of the current subsection B will be, excuse me, it will say, all the, this section of B will be stricken and will be replaced with the following language. All customers will be billed monthly assessabilities and charged account fees as specified in section 55.05, which is in the later ordinance. All ordinances or parts of ordinances in conflict are hereby repealed to the extent of that conflict. This ordinance shall be in full force and effect after publication as required by law.
Okay. Thank you, Audrey. I think we ought to probably take a vote on these individually after Audrey's round them.
I could, you want me to recap some of the things from that presentation? Okay, just real quickly from our last meeting. The impact to our residential commercial customers is gonna be about 4% to 5% increase on their bill. See the chart below. Typical thousand-watts kilowatt household, that's the typical usage of a household. Their rate's gonna go from basically 104, 105 to 110. So, about a $5 increase is what we would expect to see for the typical household. You can see the electricity charge and the customer charges are going up. Our power cost adjustment's going down. That's just reflective of the updated rate study that has corrected that disparity that's been created between what KU bills and what we charge our customers. So, it will be reset to zero. Let's see. Again, our overall, just comparative to others in our region, we're well below KU, well below the state and US averages, and right in line with, just a little bit higher than the South Rivers. And again, that was based upon just a three-month average, looking at a typical South River bill. So, again, there's fluctuations quite a bit based upon, like us, power charges, things like that. The new commercial class is the E7, so that's getting into commercial customers that want to have net billing generation, which is they've installed solar apparatus around their property. Currently, we only allow residential. With E7, we will now be able to allow that on a commercial property. They'll follow the same regulations as outlined in $51, which we didn't include in this. We're not making any changes there. I think the typical is 45 kilowatt resale apparatus. Security lights, the cost of the security lights gone down just since we're switching to LEDs mostly. So, we're able to decrease the cost and then add some options for people. Those service fees, the riser fees and transformer setting fees, again, we're adjusting those to match the costs that we see. This isn't a revenue generating area for the riser department. Panel rental, we've been doing for quite some time. We're just getting it actually in writing in the ordinance.
I have a layman's question.
Okay.
Under D for damaged meter.
Yeah.
An overused meter socket. Am I to assume that someone has plugged in multiple?
I believe that's what happens. They put something in their service that's not rated or recommended for what they've got.
Maybe they have four things plugged into two-pronged circuit. Okay. So, we're gonna vote on these individually. This is the second reading, so we need a motion then to approve ordinance N2025-13, Chapter 50 of our electricity ordinances.
Summate there.
Motion for Councilman Doakes. Is there a second?
Oh, second.
Second for Councilman Williams. Any discussion or questions? Okay. Seeing none, we're individually voting. So, I'll then pay or signify by saying aye. It's arguing with Councilman Doakes.
Aye.
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 Okay, motions carried. Thank you.
This ordinance will be published in this Sunday's paper. It will be effective December 1st. So, on the first billing cycle coming in December, we'll have these in our papers.
Now, we have N2025-14, Chapter 52, Relation Water. So, I agree with that summary.
Summary of ordinance number, excuse me, N2025-14, Chapter 52, Water. An ordinance amending and adopting as amended Chapter 52, Water, the City of Barstown's Code of Ordinances, whereas the City of Barstown performed a rate study to revise its rates to appropriately cover costs associated with providing service, and whereas the City of Barstown's Water Department has determined it is necessary to modify the rates charged to water customers based on the information learned from the rate study, now therefore be to ordain by the City Council of Barstown, Kentucky that amendments be made to Chapter 52, Water, under General Provisions, Subsection 52.01 Rates, 52.02 Water Connection Charge, 52.03 Project, 52.05 After-Hour Service, and 52.06 Billing Payment Due Date and Penalty. General Provisions. 52.01 Rates, the rates charged to all customers shall reflect the following. One, the required monthly service charge includes up to 2,000 gallons of water usage and establishes the monthly bill for each customer class by meter size. Thank you, Erin. That's wonderful. It's a chart right there. The monthly service charge, for residential customers, the rates will be reflected based on meter size, whether the customer is in the city limits or outside the city limits as set forth on the chart. For commercial customers, again, the meter size ranging all the way up to an eight-inch meter for in-city limits and outside the city limits, again, the rates are set forth on the chart. And industrial customers, the third category of customers, based on meter size, and industrial customers are the same whether inside or outside the city limits, the rates are the same. Number two, the volumetric rate for monthly water usage after the first 2,000 gallons shall be charged for the following schedule. Volumetric rate for 1,000 gallons, the customer class for residential or commercial, in the city limits is $4.88, outside the city limits is $6.69. For industrial customers, it's $4.83, outside the city limits, it's $4.93. C, for fire service charges, they shall be amended to the rates listed below, and that is based on the size of the fire servicing and then the charge per month, which is $2. For a two-inch fire mate, it's $6.26, four-inch, it's $12.56, six-inch, it's $28.71, eight-inch, it's $55.58, ten-inch, it's $112.47, the twelve-inch is $224.34 per month. Paragraph two, for multiple unit fire service customers, the above listed rates shall apply pro-rated among the users. In no case shall the amount be less than a minimum of now $5 per month. 52.02 Water Connection Charge, A, Water Connection Fee shall be amended as set forth below. And the water connection fees will be amended to reflect based on the size of the water meter and whether the customer is inside the city limits or outside the city limits as set forth on the chart. 52.04 Deposit shall be stricken entirely. 52.05 After-Hour Service shall be stricken and replaced with the following language, 52.05 Service Fees. A, One, Hydrant Meter Rental, when and where available, $100 setup fee, $50 monthly rental fee, ongoing commercial volumetric rate charge for usage. Two, Meter Test Charges, where the test odometer is requested during normal working hours by a customer. The customer will be charged $60 to cover the test and transportation costs. 52.06 Billing, then the title, Payment Due Date and will be stricken. Penalty, and then we will add account fees to the title. And paragraph B will indicate all customers will be billed monthly assessed penalties and charged account fees as specified in section 55.05. All ordinances or parts of ordinances in conflict are hereby repealed to the extent of that conflict. This ordinance shall be in full force and effect as of, is this correct, Erin? It says January 1st in this one. Okay. January 1st, 2026, and following publication as required by law.
Okay, thank you, Audrey. Erin, do you have anything to add?
Again, just to recap our last meeting, Salt River Engineering, we contracted with out of Harrisburg. She has 30 years of experience in the water industry and sewer industry. She, just similar to electric, used FY23 data instead of FY24. She's been working on this rate study for a little over a year now. So, that's why she used FY23 data. But again, she's looking at our revenues, our expenses, and then breaking them down by the actual assets that it's taken to run that system and breaks those assets into the customer classes that benefit from it. So, that's where we have added the commercial, or all the customer definitions there for commercial, industrial, and residential. Previously, that wasn't specified or we didn't charge based upon customer class. We are moving from, again, a flat minimum bill that everybody paid, no matter your class, if you didn't have classes, but everybody paid $18. I didn't, if you had a three-quarter inch meter or an eight-inch meter, you paid $18 amount as your customer charge. We're moving into a more industry-standard meter-sized flat service charge. So, that's kinda, it comes from 2,000 gallons of water and it's based upon, so these charges by meter are done because of your potential impact to our system. So, we're, you know, we have so much water that's available to an eight-inch customer, you know, their potential impact to our system is much greater than someone with a three-quarter inch meter. So, we've realigned our fees to kinda capture that type of service that we have. Volumetric rates are actually decreasing. So, in that chart there is the new volumetric rates. Typical inside-city limit customer using 4,000 gallons a month, which is the typical usage, will go from 29.62 to 32.73, so about a $3.11 increase for an inside-city limits residential user. Outside's just a little bit less than that. Again, I think we discussed last time, they've been, just the way we do CPI rate increases and the way we apply that, it just compounds over time. So, they're already paying a little bit more. So, that compounded fee just kept increasing for them. You can see this chart compared to our regional competitors or other providers, not really competitors, but others providers in our region were at the lowest end, just above $1,000. Those connection fees, again, much like electric, we are trying to recoup costs, not really trying to increase revenue there. The service fees, that's a new section. I removed the after-hour service fees and put it in another ordinance we will read later. But this service fees section captures some charges we've already been doing, hydrant meter rental and meter test charges. That's it.
Thank you, Eric. I have a quick question, just to educate me, Erin. So, when somebody gets new water service, are they given a choice of what size meter they get or how is that determined?
If it's, they can get a choice. Usually, if it's a residential, we'll just tell them, "You're getting, you know..."
This is the size one?
Yeah. Uh, some people that live off, are out in the county and they live, you know, two thousand feet off the main, the forest main there. They'll come back and they'll talk to Dylan, and Dylan and Jessica can do their calculations and say, based upon the pressure we know that's in this area, we should be fine with this size of a, of a meter.
Okay, thank you.
And then the big ones, you know, when you're getting into four and six inch, there, the engineer that's building that facility will have already determined what size of meter needs to provide service to that facility.
Uh, any, any other questions? Okay, then we need a, a motion then to approve uh ordinance B two thousand forty-five dash fourteen, as it relates to our water uh rates.
So we're making.
Motion to Councilman Hens, is there a second?
Oh, second down there.
Second to Councilwoman Hart. Any other discussion? Okay, this is a second reading. It's gonna be individual votes, so all in favor, if you would, signify by saying aye. We'll start with Councilman Hens.
Aye.
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 Okay, motion is carried, thank you.
These rates will be, sorry, these rates will be, we have an effective date in the ordinance of January first. Uh, we have uh items to change in our billing system. That's why it's a later date than electric. So um we're hoping to implement by January one, but it may be later. But with this, we're able to move forward in Austin.
Okay, thank you, Aaron. Alright, we'll move on then to uh wastewater, which is B two thousand forty-five dash fifteen, chapter fifty-three.
Thank you, Mayor. Summary of ordinance number B twenty twenty-five fifteen, chapter fifty-three wastewater. An ordinance amending and adopting as amended chapter fifty-three wastewater of the city of Barstown's code of ordinances. Whereas the city of Barstown performed a, a rate study to revise its rates to appropriately cover costs associated with providing service. And whereas the city of Barstown's wastewater department has determined it is necessary to modify the rates charged to water customers based on the information learned from the rate study. Now therefore be ordained by the city council of the city of Barstown, Kentucky, that amendments made to chapter fifty-three wastewater under fees and charges subsections fifty-three point one seventeen connection fees, fifty-three point one eighteen deposit, fifty-three point one nineteen truckers discharge fees, fifty-three point one twenty-two sewer rates, fifty-three point one twenty-three industrial surcharge rates, fifty-three point one twenty-four oil and grease surcharge, and fifty-three point one twenty-five billing. Fees and charges, fifty-three point one seventeen connection fees, paragraph B, sewer connection fees shall be amended to reflect the following. Uh, as set forth on the chart, the water meter size, uh, and whether the customer is inside or outside the city limits shall reflect the new rates. Uh, paragraph, or excuse me, section fifty-three point one eighteen deposit shall be stricken from the ordinance. Uh, fifty-three point one nineteen truckers discharge fees shall be amended to reflect the fee for truckers who haul septic tank sludge and dubbing the city system shall be increased ninety-three dollars and ten cents per load up to a thousand gallons, and nine dollars and thirty-one cents per one hundred gallons for all loads over one thousand gallons per load. Section fifty-three point one twenty-two sewer rates, uh, paragraph D, monthly sewer rate shall be amended to reflect the following, and as set forth on the chart, depending on whether that's a residential, commercial, or industrial customer. Uh, and that whether they are in or outside the city limits, or for industrial customers, whether they are a base industrial or an industrial pre-treatment customer, uh, their minimum bill of two thousand gallons, and then their volumetric rate for thousand gallons for over that amount is set forth on the chart. Fifty-three point one twenty-three industrial surcharge rates for industrial customer wastewater loading surcharge rates. Uh, no surcharge rate will be charged for wastewater with a strength of less than two hundred and fifty milligrams per, per liter BOD, two hundred and fifty milligrams per liter TSS, and two hundred and fifty milligrams per liter ammonia nitrate. And then we're adding a sentence that reads, a maximum allowable mass loading shall be established via industrial wastewater permit, or excuse me, discharge permits. The following surcharge rate schedule shall be applied. And for discharge, for BOD loading per pound, uh, that shall be two, two hundred and fifty milligrams per liter and over, uh, the rate shall be sixty-two cents per pound. For TSS loading per pound, two hundred and fifty milligrams, is it milligrams or micrograms? I forget what it was now.
Milligrams.
It is milligrams, okay, per liter. And over, it will be sixty-two cents per pound. For ammonia loading, for twenty milligrams per liter and over, the surcharge rate will be one dollar and twenty-six per pounds. Uh, section fifty-three point one twenty-four oil and grease surcharge, there shall be a surcharge fee of now sixty-one cents per pound for oil and grease total in excess of one hundred milligrams per liter. And then section fifty-three point one twenty-five billing, we are adding to the title penalty and account fees. And paragraph B will read, all customers will be billed monthly, and then adding assess fees and charge account fees as specified in section fifty-five point thirty-five. All ordinances or parts of ordinances in conflict are hereby repealed to the extent of that conflict. This ordinance shall be in full force and effect as of January first, twenty twenty-six, and following publication as required by law.
Okay, thank you, Audrey. Aaron.
Um.
Next one. Waste point?
Again, uh, Salt River Engineering did this rate study. Uh, she moved on to it right after she did the water. Uh, so she was looking by customer class, looking at all assets in the system, and seeing how those customer classes utilize the assets, and uh, what it took to deliver, uh, provide service to those uh people, the customers. Uh, just some highlights here, connection fees, again, uh, we're adjusting to match costs incurred, not really generating revenue. So those are debt fees there, connections. Trucker discharge, that's the people that clean septic tanks, uh, and they bring it to us for, to drop it off. Increasing those fees just to align with and match the treatment costs. Um, we'll still bill the same with this change, uh, so it's gonna be based on water usage. Um, but we will break it down by, we already had customer class definitions, uh, so we didn't have to change anything there. But now we're actually going to break it down and utilize those customer classes uh for the, the rates indicated uh there. The typical residential customer using four thousand gallons of water a month, their inside city limits, they'll go from thirty-eight oh four a month to forty-four thirty-five, which is about a six dollar thirty-one cent increase uh to the, to the forest of children. Uh, comparative to our other regional suppliers, we're right middle. Yeah.
Any questions? Alright, uh. Then if I could, for the second reading, I'd ask for a motion to approve ordinance B two thousand twenty-five dash fifteen, chapter fifty-three wastewater.
Some move, Mayor.
And motion to Councilman Williams, is there a second?
Second, Mayor.
Second to Councilman Doakes. Any other discussion or questions? Alright, this is the second reading, so we need individual votes. So all in favor, signify by saying aye. We'll start with Councilman Doakes.
Aye.
Uh.
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, motion is carried, thank you. Okay, Audrey, you got one more. I thought it was.
Definitely numbers, though.
Getting better, this is uh. Ordinance B two thousand twenty-five dash fifteen, chapter fifty-three, oh, excuse me, fifty-five, combined utilities.
Hold on, I don't think I have the summary. There we go, right now I got this, I was like, gosh, this seems longer than I remember. I didn't have the summary up there. Alright. Thank you. Summary of ordinance number B twenty twenty-five sixteen, chapter fifty-five combined utility system. An ordinance amending and adopting as amended chapter fifty-five combined utility system of the city of Barstown's code of ordinances. Whereas the city of Barstown performed a rate study to revise its rates to appropriately cover costs associated with providing service. And whereas the city of Barstown wishes to consolidate account and penalty fees for all utility operations under one section of the ordinance. Now therefore be ordained by the city council of the city of Barstown, that amendments we made to chapter fifty-five combined utility system, subsection fifty-five point oh five billing, when due penalty. Section fifty-five point oh five billing, when due penalty, adding to the title deposits, account fees. This section shall be amended to reflect that the CAO and the CFO shall be responsible for certain responsibilities related to billing and application of payments to accounts, and adding subsections E and F, which read as follows. Subsection E, each single residential unit or multiple residential unit shall tender to the city with the application for any utility connection, a deposit as set forth in the rate table below. These rates shall apply to residential customers only. Deposits for commercial establishments will be determined at the time of application for utilities, which shall be in the sum equivalent to six weeks billing for all connected utility services. The deposit shall be retained by the city, and if necessary, upon termination of services, applied towards payment of any delinquent balances or refunded to the user, residential or commercial, after two years, provided all balances have been kept current during the two years, and no checks for return for any reason during that period. Deposits, for electric, for an owner, it's a hundred dollars. For a renter, it's a hundred and forty dollars. For water, for an owner fee, it's fifty dollars. For a renter fee, it's sixty-five dollars. For sewer, for an under fee, it's sixty dollars. For a renter fee, it's seventy dollars. Paragraph F, other account fees that may be charged include, one, a return check charge of fifty dollars shall be applied to all returned check payments. Two, an after hours service fee of seventy-five dollars for any and all service calls made after hours may be charged to the account of the consumer, provided that it is not the fault of the city. This will include after hour service charge ons. Three, a disconnect fee of twenty-five dollars will apply to all customer accounts within the Barstown city limits. A disconnect fee of forty dollars will apply to all customer accounts outside of the Barstown city limits. Four, a truck roll fee of thirty dollars will apply to customer requested services during normal business hours such as meter rereads, lock, unlock meter service, and turn on, turn off meter service. All ordinances or parts of ordinances in conflict are hereby repealed to the extent of that, of that conflict. This ordinance shall be in full force and effect following publication as required by law.
Okay, thank you, Audrey. Aaron.
Yeah.
It's like we just kind of consolidated the ordinance.
Yes, we had, that you could, she struck a lot of things in the previous ordinances that they've moved here. Uh, trying to be a little bit more consistent. Uh, some of the account fees, you know, would be in electric, but really applied to everybody, and some, one of them was in water, but would apply to everybody, so we're moving it here. So it applies, we, it's clearly defined that it applies to all of the my utility system. I mean, yeah.
I have a question on those two. Just thinking about the real estate world. So when somebody lives in the city and they're moving, then they go to their new residence, and they've already paid a fee on the first residence, are they charging another fee on the second residence? Does that just transfer over?
Per this ordinance, we would charge another one. But, I mean, case by case basis, we can always, you know, if, if it's still on their account, I mean, we could move it, you know, from one account to another.
But if they've been refunded it because they've been there long enough, then they would pay a new one?
Right.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you.
And they can always ask and talk to me, and.
Okay.
Our customer service girls are pretty good about working with, especially, I mean, we have, as long as they are, have been consistently in the city.
Right.
Um, and we can see their history.
Right.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you. If there's other questions, we need a motion then for the second reading of B two thousand forty-five dash sixteen, chapter fifty-five, the combined utility system. So, motion to Councilwoman Hart, you have a second?
Second, Mayor.
Second to Councilwoman Hens. Any other discussion or questions? If none, then uh, we do individual votes again. We do all in favor, signify by saying aye. We'll start with Councilman Hens.
Aye.
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 Great, motion carried. Probably get through all of this. Um, of course, we don't do it every year, so we went three or four years on this one. Thank you, guys, for all the work we did on all this, and uh, again, all the work that we had to do in-house to get this in a reasonable and understandable form as best we could uh for the council, like it, and our city attorney. Uh, thank you. And see, now we'll move on to our, of course, from our staff and our committee, so Gavin, how about our department, anything to report?
This is our Mr. Mayor. We have received some updates from our factory in Dublin. Our fire truck that we started about a year ago is, now has a cab, now has a chassis, now has some paint. So it's all coming together. It looks like it's gonna be arrival on schedule. And also the holidays is kind of a busy time for us, so we're, we are broadcasting holiday-based uh, safety tips throughout the, throughout our social media platforms, trying to make sure people are safe through the holidays with cooking and traveling.
Do we, what was the, what's the day of delivery supposed to be for the fire truck?
The, um, projected for April, Mr. Mayor, yeah, April twenty-sixth.
Okay, thank you. Chief Crescent?
Um, I'm sure everyone has seen, we had a break-in at Croon's over the past couple days. Um, um, the suspect was in and out, um, just under a minute, very short amount of time that they were in there. So our detectives are actively working that case now, so hopefully we'll have some updates on that very soon. And then on a positive note, we have light up on Friday. Um, I know, uh, Philip and Josh and their team have been working really hard to get everything prepared, and I think everyone's excited to see that new beautiful Christmas tree lit up, so uh, it should be a really good time for people that come out.
That'd be six o'clock, um, we did the light up.
Yes.
Assuming the crowd didn't hook us up too bad.
Sure.
So, and then the parade will be the following Thursday at six o'clock, so. And um, if you haven't already seen it, our public works department literally built Santa on this lake.
It's amazing.
Uh, up there in the middle of the park. It's already become a mainstake for picture-taking. I saw two Heaton's in it over the weekend, so. Not me and Alice. But it's really, Philip and those guys do an amazing job, and you got the mailbox for Santa's letters up there, and Park Village, it's crazy, it looked tremendous after the light up this Friday, so. Uh, really happy with all of that. Um. Any, any members of the council have anything to bring for the council this evening?
I just wanted to share, uh, kind of an update of a nail cares partnership of Nelson District Court. It's the name that, uh, our community grants gives us nail care. This is what we use it for, is to find personnel to do that, so just wanted to share our updated numbers. We're at sixty-one percent success rate for twenty twenty-five, so we're very proud of that, and we'll continue to march on.
Good job. Thank you, I appreciate it. Uh, and you've got your report in black on the DMS, there you have the movement, and you have time. Um, remember how many secretary deans? As far as, um, calling the shop Christmas party is December the fifth, so you make it. Um, I spoke with our public works superintendent, Craig Downs, today. Um, they're all prepared for the winter months. We've got, replenished all our salt that we used last year. We ordered two hundred tons. Uh, we now have seven hundred fifty tons in our salt barn, so that's our, what he tries to keep on hand. Um, obviously we hope we don't ever have a winter where you don't go through that many tons, but last year we went through, I guess, approximately about two hundred. But then a couple of pretty cold, were pretty heavy snows for here, and cold weather that kept that snow on the roads a lot longer. Um, he did say, they had tested all plows, our leaves are working order, they got one salt sprayer, they're getting fixed right now, a little bigger ones. Uh, our leaf pickup has been somewhat slower than normal because one of our pickers, the machine itself has been broke down, and then the wet conditions we had to walk around makes the pickup slower. Um, and of course the weight accumulates a lot faster in the truck, so he said the picker's prepared now, and they will grow normally till the end of December anyway, but if they had to, they would continue if, if it stays really wet throughout the balance of the leaf season, but um, he's got two crews back on the road, I think, now, so. Uh, that's good. Excuse me. Um, the judge and I and Ken Houston, we had a meeting with Senator Higginson um, yesterday, I think. Uh, this is, they're, they're getting ready for their next legislative session, so we kind of shared some of our infrastructure needs, and he, of course, Senator Higginson chairs the transportation committee, had him kind of update us on some of the status of roads that are in dis. committee, had him kind of update us on some of the status of roads that are in design phase and some others that are in the planning phase and so forth. He is hosting the Senate retreat. They always have a retreat with their leadership before they have their annual legislative sessions. It turned out that Senator Higginson, he said it was normally his year as a leadership, they rotated, and he said he had to let, President Steinbrenner's know when we were talking about it, he said, "I haven't made up my mind completely what my plans are, so no matter what, I still want to host this retreat." So this is his last year in the Senate, but they'll be hosting that next week here, which is a great thing for our community to have them here, and we will make a, have a meeting with them and talking more detail about our needs here, and hopefully the leadership will recognize the growth we're having here and the good job we do here overall, and hopefully get some money to help us with all the infrastructure needs, and obviously road projects are always important. So that's, that's kind of going on right now. And I think most of you all should have gotten invitation from Senator Higginson that night, that night. And then we also, Candy Maseroni spoke with her today. We were doing a Zoom meeting with Chairman Petrie, he chairs the budget committee of the House, so we're going to try to have a similar conversation with him prior to the legislative session, to kind of outline our needs here, so. They got a pretty big balance of, you know, in reserve right now, so we hope they'll be willing to spread some of that around for communities our size, you know, that need water and sewer projects and road projects, so it's good to get a chance to meet front of other people. Any questions? Okay, if not, that's all I have. Hope to see everybody Friday night, so we're a little cold, but that's, that's still like holiday season, and I haven't looked as far as the Christmas parade, is it from the Capitol Center?
I haven't looked at it, probably not.
I'll be, we'll be ready for it.
Yes.
Don't see me, TK and our new guys will be ready, and the florist club, forty-five degrees. But that's time to hear the board in Friday night.
It won't be long. That's for free.
I haven't really gone last year, so. All right, thanks. Well, I hope everybody has a great holiday this week, and you can help bring in the start of the Friday night, so it'll be amazing to see that new tree and, and court square is still going to be pretty well decorated, but courthouse is heartless, too much renovation there, and the park, the mayor's park should be, they built the new reins, they reparked the reindeer that normally are down in front of the courthouse, they're driving the sleigh this year, so it's, it's amazing those guys made that up for themselves, so.
And Greg Ashworth made all those boxes.
Yeah, he was up there and, and the San Diego weather permitting, that's what he's been doing his weekends at the sleigh, because the courthouse is closed, so we're not going to be able to use that, so I think he's excited about it. I see him pretty often these days, he's kind of sculpting the area out, seeing where he's going to get this new sleigh, so he's looking forward to it. All right, did no other thing, I need a motion for Jordan. So motion for councilman Hens, is there a second?
I'll second it.
All right, second, councilman Williams, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Big thank you, everyone.